Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 Tom Water City Council. And we will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Lee Adalhoff?
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson?
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy?
I did not see her. She would probably be remote tonight. I have not seen her yet.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout?
Present.
Councilmember Michael Altaser?
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabi?
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz?
Present.
And Mayor Debbie Sullivan?
And I'm present. Join me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please note that Councilmember Cathy is present. All right, with that, we're going to go to our next item, which is a proclamation for Martin Luther King Day, which was January 20th, 2025. And Councilmember Swarthout will read that. And I just want to make mention that there was going to be members of the Fred U. Harris Lodge in attendance, but I have not seen them yet. So if they do not, if they are unable to make it this evening, I'll make sure that they get the copy. So go ahead, Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. I shared this with all our council members and thank Councilmember Jefferson for giving me the opportunity to read the proclamation. Whereas the civil rights movement in the 1960s profoundly impacted the course of American history and continues to shape the direction and debate of our society. And whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a civil rights leader, devoted his life to the nonviolent advancement of civil rights and public service. And whereas Dr. King believed in the nation of freedom and justice for all and challenged all community members to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of the United States of America. And whereas Dr. King's dream is inspirational and important today as when he first expressed it over 60 years ago. Whereas even with the progress achieved during the civil rights movement and the subsequent decades, inequities, injustices, racism, and other forms of discrimination and oppression are still prevalent in our society. And whereas Dr. King's life was struck down by a bullet of bigotry on April 4th, 1968, but his dream of pursuing a world free from prejudice and injustice lives on. And whereas we honor and celebrate Dr. King's memory, and importantly, we also preserve his legacy that calls upon all of us to stand against injustice and protect our most sacred tenants of democracy. And whereas Dr. King always led by example and provided a framework for how each of us can shape the future by calling out injustice and continuing to work toward a more equitable society. And therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim January 20th, 2025 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day and urges the people to take an opportunity to reflect upon Dr. King's vision and rededicate ourselves to continuing to advance the principles of justice and equality for all.
Thank you. I don't see anyone here from the Fred U. Harris Lodge, so I will make sure that they get the copy of that proclamation. Next is public comment, and this again is for public comment, not related to the public hearing this evening. So public comment is limited to three minutes. And do we have someone running the clock this evening? Okay, perfect. All right, so the person on the list is Pamela Hanson. If you can come to the podium and state your name and the address for the record.
Thank you. Pamela Hanson, Post Office, Box 14521, Tom Water, Washington. I'm going to start with humor. Park bench with Tim Conway, Carol Burnett in a homeless costume. She joked about turning a knife into a spoon and a gun into a bar of soap. Tim Conway sat there in a suit as she pretended to talk to a warden. That was decades ago. Kind of funny, huh? I didn't get her shows when I was a kid. I'm sure if I watched more of them, I'll get more of her humor. But I think to grownups in New York or Central Park, that may not have been too funny. This is a bud bag. Okay, about this big. I enlarged it for your benefit. Hadn't been around one of these in a long time. The last time was Alaskan. It was a bag bigger than this. This is in Thurston County. This is a needle. And you can see, kind of possibly from there, that on the 20 line, there is still some brown material in it. That was at my feet. This one looks scary, doesn't it? I had it in my pocket for about an hour before I turned it over to law enforcement when they showed up. This is what the other side of that bag looked like. It was full of white powder. I was told it was probably fentanyl. I didn't get to see a test of it. I didn't get to see any fancy equipment that taxpayers have bought them, like a Pendar possibly, or anything like that, but I'm sure it was tested. This. This was, this was in the news on Wednesday, January 15th. It's a signal jammer. And I'm going to read from my notes about the indictment in Seattle. And so I'm going to put it in public comment in case you haven't seen the news. It included 17 firearms, fentanyl, suspected fentanyl, 23 kilos, meth, cocaine, heroin, and the Seattle CID and homeless encampments by, and I'm being very specific because it was in the news report, the jungle drug trafficking organization. They were very clear. The jungle drug trafficking organization. Now, in one of the reports, news reports, someone dug a little deeper and asked a question about the signal jammer. The FBI confirmed that it can be used to disable calls for help. Now, one can assume that that means cell calls. That means any active shooter, any place like that. So funding, please give law enforcement funding. These items need to be found. This one specifically, the jammer, it puts all of us in danger. The jug, the jungle drug trafficking organization had one. They confiscated it.
Thank you. That's all on, all I had signed up on the sheet. Is there anyone else who are wanting to make public comment? Okay, with that, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adalhoff, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. All right, with the consent calendar, we have approved minutes from the City Council Work Session of November 26th, approval of the minutes of the City Council Joint Planning Commission Work Session and Council Session on December 10th, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting from January 7th, payment vouchers, service provider agreement with SCJ Engineering for On-Call Engineering Services, Amendment Number Two, service provider agreement with Dispute Resolution Center for the Tenant and Landlord Mediation Project and Conflict Resolution Resource Line, interlocal agreement with the City of Olympia for Fire Vehicle Maintenance, interlocal agreement with Thurston County Emergency Management Council, interlocal agreement, ILA, with the City of Olympia, Lacey, and Thurston County to, for implementing the Regional Environmental Education Program, or REEP, right away, right of entry agreement with Dana Day for the Barnes Lake Management District, memorandum of understanding, MOUB, between the City of Tom Water and Lot Clean Water Alliance regarding the purchase and sale agreement for properties in the Deschutes Valley, Amendment Two, Software Alliance License and Service Agreement with 365 Labs on behalf of Thurston County Law Enforcement Records Management Consortium, 2025 Long Range Planning Work Program, the 2025 City Council Meeting Schedule and Summer Recess, and waiver for TMC 115.01.080B, and that's from the Community Development Department. So, there was a lot of work that was done in that, in that. So now we are going to go ahead and I'm going to, I will be conducting now a public hearing for Resolution R 2025-001, the Transportation Benefit District Ballot Proposal. And there is, for those interested, there is a sign-up sheet available at the table next to the door for those individuals wishing to give testimony. Staff will make a presentation and answer any questions from council. Following the staff report, I will open the hearing for public testimony. So with that, I will go ahead and, and Brandon Hicks will go ahead and present.
So, good evening, Mayor Sullivan and council members. I'm here today to discuss the Transportation Benefit District Resolution ahead of the attempted renewal this spring, if approved by y'all and voters. There's not going to be a whole lot of new stuff from what I've presented over the last two meetings. Honestly, I think the biggest difference from last week is that I'm not wearing athletic shorts and a t-shirt. But ultimately, I need to go over all this again in case there's anybody in the audience in person or online who has not heard it. And then it'll be a refresher for y'all ahead of the vote. So these are some of the TBD facts that I've discussed in the past. I'm not going to read them off one by one. So anybody who wants can read through them right now or come back, because it's a lot to read right there. One of the biggest points that I want to highlight is that the cost of 0.2% in sales tax. If you spend $100 on sales taxable items, that's 20 cents that you're going to spend for the, for Tom Water streets. Another point that I would make is for what the average person in Tom Water spends per year in sales taxable items versus what they would have to pay if they, if this wasn't here and we kept the same program. It's about, it's about only 40%. So this is one of the few taxes that you can think of that are actually saving taxpayer dollars. And ultimately, that's just because we're taking the expenses to maintain our streets and spreading it amongst everybody who drives on Tom Water streets. So this is just, this slide here, I've just got, just to give a general overview of the concept of pavement management. Really, the whole basis is, is if you take care of the streets while they're good, you're going to spend a lot less money. So anything, you want to try to keep everything above the upper dash line. If you go below that, you start looking at pretty high-cost improvements. And by maintaining our streets in, in good condition, by using things like chip seal or overlays or milling inlays, then we can keep ourselves above that dash line. Okay, so looking at the dollars that are associated with the TBD, over the last 10 years, the TBD, and I'm sorry, TBD for anybody who's in the audience or listening is Transportation Benefit District. It's just a lot easier to say TBD. But the TBD has generated over $19.2 million in the last 10 years. And by the time this initial 10 years is up, it's going to be over $20 million in 10 years. The, the funding has also been used to leverage more than $6 million in grants, almost $6.5 million in grants. So in total, the TBD, having that in Tom Water has resulted in almost $26 million for street preservation. And then the, the monthly revenue exceeds annual pavement maintenance budget pre-TBD. So we are exponentially better at preserving our streets than we were before the TBD. In fact, if we didn't have the TBD, our roads would be much worse than what they were 10 years ago. And when I started working here at the city, which was close to 10 years ago, I can remember them being in pretty poor condition. I would say, I'll say it on a future slide again, but we probably had the worst streets in the county, at least out of the Olympia, Tom Water, Lacey, and Thurston County as a whole, the larger entities. And I know Yelm's up there now too, but I don't know what their street condition was like. And now we're, I would say we're the second best. We're catching up to Lacey. It's going to be difficult for us ever to be up to Lacey because our city and our road, all of our infrastructure is so much older. But for, for the age of Tom Water, we're doing an amazing job. I do have sort of a funny little, and I showed this last time, so here it is again. Everybody loved the emoji, so I left them. Again, I really did not change the presentation. But ultimately, what this is trying to show, it's, it's an exaggerated depiction with, if, if that line, that multicolored line is going down, that means our roads are getting worse. And so before the TBD, you can see that we were falling really fast. Our roads were degrading really fast because we had a lot of roads or streets that were in that really poor condition where it requires very expensive work. As we started to build up some revenue from the TBD or fund balance from the TBD, we were able to increase the size of our projects. And as you can see, the roads started to get better. In 2018, we leveraged some really substantial grants. You can see the grant funding is the orange. And from that point forward, because, because we had the grant revenue, we were able to save the blue TBD revenue that you see for future years. And our street conditions actually started to either maintain the condition at the time or start to improve. And then we were able to leverage a couple smaller grants through the years and then another, another good year in 2023. And we have yet to spend most of those grant dollars. And then after that, what I'm showing is you see the two lines going down. Ultimately, the red line would be, you know, if, if the TBD is not renewed. And then the yellow line is ultimately where we're going to be at right now if the TBD is renewed because the costs of road maintenance or any type of construction is far exceeding sales tax growth. And there is a fix there, and that is point capital projects. So we go for more grants and we keep that line up. That's how we did it in the last seven years or so. It does require staffing and we're kind of struggling in our engineering section right now. But when we are staffed up, if the TBD is renewed, we're going to, we're going to hit the grants pretty hard again. Okay, I didn't realize you can't read a single, maybe it's my eyes, but some people aren't going to be able to read that very well. But the mantra for the TBD, and I believe it has been for other initiatives in the city in the past, but it's promises made, promises kept. So on the screen there, you see a map of what we went to the voters with. I believe this would have been in 2015, not in 2014 when the TBD was created, but in 2015 when we were actually going to voters. It bothers me, but the map back then obviously didn't incorporate all of what's in the city now, but I can't help it. It was 2015. But these are the roads, the yellow and the red are the ones that we went to voters. We didn't promise to do those roads, but those were the ones that we anticipated at the time based on our pavement management system. And right now, I'll show where we have spent TBD dollars. So these are the projects we've completed to date. As you can see, there's not a whole lot of red or yellow left. And then on this next click, you'll see most of what was red and yellow that's left over is currently in design, funded, and will be constructed within the next two years. And then there's only seven road segments left that are going to remain red or yellow even after the TBD ends. And there's, there's a very good reason for that. Most of those are actually going to be reconstructed by development projects. And so we're not going to spend the dollars where it already has to happen due to development. There are a couple segments that we pulled from the program specifically because we believe that the initial ratings that were done back in 2014 were, were not correct based on current conditions. Or at least they did not degrade at the same rate that we had anticipated at the time. So we found places where it made more sense to spend the money based on trying to utilize taxpayer dollars the best way we can. Okay, so on this slide, I have some of the major highlights of the accomplishments that we've been able to make happen with the TBD dollars. So we have either repaved, chip sealed, or at least done some form of preservation on more than 100 lane miles of road in Tom Water, and that's over 40% of the streets that we own. We've used over 50,000 tons of asphalt in that preservation effort. There's been more than 100 new curb ramps installed. And there's been over 38,000 feet of pavement markings. Now, that does not include the four projects that you see on the bottom of the list. All of those projects down there are TBD-sponsored projects. Much of them, we've been able to leverage grants with, so it's not all TBD dollars going there. And even after completing those projects, we'll be able to fund at least one more paper. So ultimately, what I'm trying to say is all those numbers above of what we've completed are going to be quite a bit higher by the time we're done with all of the TBD dollars from the first 10 years. So now, the reason that I'm actually here today is for Resolution R 2025-001. And this provides for a ballot measure to be submitted to the electors in April. And the intent is to renew the current 0.2% sales tax for TBD for an additional 10 years. So it would result in no change in sales tax in Tom Water. And renewal does require an affirmative vote from taxpayers. So we would not have had to do a public hearing to put this on the ballot. Is that correct, Karen? But we, we are today because we want to expand the scope or the eligibility of projects for the TBD. And the focus of what we're trying to add is really what's in our sidewalk program. And I say it's a minor change, but it's pretty substantial. We have a lot of barriers in the city, especially since we're an old city. And the barriers can be missing segments. They can be portions of sidewalk that are heaved from, from roots or curb ramps that are non-ADA compliant. And so our goal with the sidewalk program is to try to make all of our pedestrian facilities accessible. And so this ultimately would help kind of boost our program. And then the, the main focus, I'll talk about on future slides, but some of the things that are going to be good is we can use those dollars to leverage more grants that are meant for sidewalk projects or pedestrian projects. What makes that exciting for me is that there isn't a lot of substantial grants for pedestrian facilities. Really, the large grants are more for road capacity projects. And so it's, it's hard to get significant sidewalk work done, sidewalk work done. I was wondering why that sounded weird. And then a lot of what is going to be in the sidewalk program is going to be either public concern-driven. It's going to be what is in our ADA transition plan is probably going to be the largest driver. And then with these dollars, we'll be able to increase the safe walking routes for schools. So it's going to make it easier for students to get out and exercise, walk to school safely. And again, it's going to remove barriers throughout the city. So in the last, again, you saw the map from the last time we went to the voters. In 2015, it was the same as what we're doing now. Really, the eligible projects were all transportation projects within the city. And specifically, what we did is we have in our TIP, our Transportation Improvement Program and our Capital Facilities Plan, we have an annual pavement maintenance project. And what that does, it affords us, it affords us the ability to reevaluate our streets every year and determine where it makes the most sense to spend our dollars to get the best benefit. And so we don't specifically call out streets intentionally. Otherwise, we'd be coming to you with a change process every single year. So what we do instead is we come to you before we go to bid on the project. So you get a chance to see where we're doing work and comment at that time. The typical project types that you would see us use these funds on would be our annual pavement maintenance project. I say annual, but we do skip years every now and then. If prices are high, if staffing is low, and we make up for it in future years by doing much larger projects, which gets us economies of scale as well. We'll use it on some of our large capital projects that aren't intended just for paving, but there is pavement within those limits that were in the pavement management program. And then the intent right now with the change that I discussed a couple slides ago, or maybe one slide ago, is to work on standalone sidewalk projects rather than just only focusing on where we're doing pavement maintenance. Priority areas are going to be residential streets is, is one of them. Everybody loves fresh black pavement in front of their houses. It looks nice and increase property values. But the process can be pretty painful when we come through and do the construction. So it, it is one of those double-edged swords type of things. But in the end, there's a huge benefit, especially to those who live right there. We're going to be doing a lot of roadway repair and sealing. And the intent of that is that we're slowly transitioning from what we've seen over the last 10 years, where we're doing pretty major work in some areas, to now we're going to slowly focus more on the more affordable preservation to slowly improve all of the city. There is still going to be some very poor streets that we need to get out and hit, and those, those are the ones that cost a lot of money. I have a couple of my pet peeve ones there, and I called it out in the meeting last week, but Hanson Street is the worst one for me. Because, and the only reason we haven't been able to do that one is because there's a utility project. But as soon as the utility project's done, I'm going to find a way to get that thing paid. And then again, milling inlay or chip seal, and these would be for the arterials and collectors, focusing primarily on the ones that were originally built 20 years or more ago. There's a lot of roads out there that still seem new. Little Rock Road is a good example, Tom Water Boulevard before the pavement maintenance work we did a couple of years ago. It's hard to see when you're driving, but they're actually degrading pretty quickly. There's some alligator spots, some cracks. And we want to get in there and fix them before they get bad. Otherwise, we're going to get into major expenses again. And then for the pedestrian improvements component that we're trying to add, really, priority is going to be what's in the ADA transition plan, and that feeds our sidewalk program. The, the main purpose is removing barriers and then increasing the ability for more people to use our transportation, our pedestrian transportation system. We will continue to try to do work specifically in the area of other projects. This will allow us to go past the paving limits and, and be practical and get a lot of the other issues that are in the vicinity of those projects. So I have two of the most important points that I want to get across and stress on the screen. The first one is the 0.2% portion of the current sales tax used to fund TBD ensures that everybody who uses Tom Water streets and who shops in Tom Water is paying a fair share of the streets that they're using and not just folks who live in Tom Water. And I said it a few slides ago. It's, it's going to bring down Tom Water resident costs about 250% per household. So if this goes away, it actually costs taxpayer dollars more if we want to, in Tom Water, if we want to maintain our current program. And then the other one is, this is not a sales tax increase. It is just maintaining what we have right now. It is, it is continuing the current sales tax in Tom Water. Okay, so why is this important? Why are we going through the process of getting this renewed? Most of those are pretty, pretty obvious, I would say. But just to point it out, as I said, this one's not obvious, except for I just said it, but it spreads the costs over over people who come into Tumwater and use the streets. It maintains the current sales tax rate. If you go to the store and you spend $100 in taxable purchases, it's going to cost you 20 cents. Over the last 10 years, it's generated, combined with the grants, over $25 million. If it's renewed over the next 10 years, we're projecting over $30 million, and that's just on the TBD portion. If we can get staffed up, we're going to do our best to get more grants as long as they're there. With the changes, we're going to be able to leverage more of the pedestrian centric grants. And then the slide where I had the funny looking line with the emojis, it really at the end, and I still is from the finance staff and from city administrators, former and present, I'm calling it the pavement management cliff, but where it just starts diving on the red. And it is a real thing that could happen, and it would not take us long to get back to where we were. I already talked about the fact that we had what I would consider the worst pavement condition out of Lacey Olympia, Tumwater, and Thurston County 10 years ago, and we're right up there at second, I would say now. And then another hidden benefit is that it actually increases project utilization for staff in the transportation and engineering department. And really, what that's about is that when you work on a design project, it is incredibly difficult to put it on the shelf and take it back out in the future. It is not difficult with pavement maintenance projects. So whenever we have any little gap rather than starting a significantly difficult project that we didn't plan on starting yet, we just start working on the pavement maintenance project. So like, we started working on this year's pavement maintenance project last summer when we had time. We just start picking away at it. And then we're ready, we can put it out to bid when we see the prices are the lowest. Another slide that's hard for me to read. So here's the schedule for what remains. I brought this a couple of times, and I try to update it every time. So I'm here today for consideration of the resolution. And then there's going to be the public hearing today for the eligible project change that we discussed. Between January and February, we're going to, I'm going to talk to you about this in a minute, but if we choose to solicit our own supporting and opposing committees, we'll be going through that process here very soon. Communication staff have been working on a whole lot of information for this. And one of the pieces that they're going to work on is an informational mailer. Again, in February, we're going to come forward with a collective statement for y'all to look at and agree on or disagree on, and we'll work on that. February 18, if you choose to go with the pro and con committee, we'll bring forward a separate resolution for each committee. And then February 21, we're going to, is the deadline for the resolution to go to the county. And then, of course, the election is on April 22. And I'll just talk about it on this slide so I don't go past it. When, back in 2015, when we went to the voters, we, you have an option. You either solicit your own pro and con committee for what goes on the ballot. And if you don't, then the county does it for you. In 2015, the council chose to do its own solicitation. And so if you all want to do that, then we'll want to get going on it pretty quickly. So I might just ask right now, if that's okay? Does it seem like you all want to solicit internally this time, or do we want the county to do it?
Internal.
Okay, I see at least six heads nodding. I'm sorry, Councilmember Kathy, I can't see you. Okay, so we'll start working on that tomorrow, and we'll get it in front of y'all as soon as possible, kind of work through some proposals on how we can solicit pro and con committees. Assuming the resolution passes. Everything I say is assuming the resolution passes. Let's see, that's it on this slide. And so fortunately, this went pretty quick compared to what I thought. But so I'm here to answer any questions that you have. And if you don't have any, then we'll move forward to the public hearing.
All right, any questions? We did, I believe we covered this in a work session.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. With that. Yes, Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Thanks for the language that's in our packet under the public hearing. This is the language that would be on the ballot?
Yes.
How was that crafted? Do we write that, or do we receive assistance from the Secretary of State's office, or how was that?
Our wonderful city attorney drafted it, and I glanced at it and agreed.
Are you asking about the ballot measure that ends in approved or approver?
Yeah, at the, yes, where it says, should this proposition be acted into law, the language above that?
Yes. Oh, that was drafted by your city attorney.
Any other question? Hold on a moment. Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, that was a very thorough briefing. And you know, you have a good briefing when there's not a lot of questions. So thank you for your work on this. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
There are no other questions? Did you? Yeah. So, all right. So I'm going to open the public testimony portion, and then we can have further discussion. So if I can have staff get the sign up sheet? No one signed up. Do we have anyone online? No one online signed up. So I'll open the public comment portion and identify that no one signed up on the sheet, nor has anyone signed up remotely. Is there anyone in the audience or attending in person that would like to give public testimony? Okay, with that, I'm closing the public comment portion of the public hearing. And so I'm going to ask if there's any additional questions from council and then move forward with the resolution. Any questions? Comments? Karen, do we need to vote on this this evening? Yes. So do I have anyone who wants to entertain a motion?
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Swartho.
I would like to make a motion that.
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution, excuse me, adopt resolution number R 2025-001, providing for a ballot proposition to be submitted to the qualified electors on April 26, 2025.
And I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Swartho, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Alt Hauser.
All right, just for the record, April, you meant to say April 22, 2025? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. You said 26.
I thought you said 25. I'm sorry.
April 22. It's 22 in the.
22 and 25.
April 22.
All right. We will be clear as the dates presented. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. And with that, we're going to move to our next item on the agenda, which is for council considerations. Ordinance number O 2024-008, which is a general commercial residential mixed use amendments. And Brad Madruja is presenting. Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. Tonight, I'm bringing, bringing forth an ordinance that had been given as a briefing to the planning commission in November of last year in a public hearing in December. The general government committee was briefed on this earlier this month. Next slide, please. The intent of the ordinance is very specific. It is amendments to municipal code, chapter 1822, for the general commercial zone district. And it is focused on essentially making it easier to have high intensity mixed use residential uses in the general commercial zone. I'll explain a little bit more detail what that means. Next slide, please. Question was raised at the general government committee about the location of the general commercial areas within the city. General commercial is concentrated primarily along the west side of I-5, between I-5 and Little Rock. It's the dark red areas. There's a couple of areas outside of that elsewhere in the city, but for the most part, it's concentrated in that particular corridor. Next slide, please. The intent is, we currently allow for, excuse me, high rise residential, five stories or more multifamily uses within the district. There are just two residential uses period that are allowed within the general commercial, and high rise residential is one of those. Currently, that requires a conditional use permit in order to be approved. As part of our discussions late last year, we're proposing that we amend that to become, basically get rid of that particular use and replace it with a use that is permitted outright, which is a multifamily residential structures that have a minimum density of 40 dwelling units per acre that are part of a mixed use development in the same structure or site. The idea is five story multifamily is probably very appropriate in the general commercial, given the intensity of the uses. But our concerns actually are more, number one, preserving space for commercial uses, while at the same time getting a very high intensity, density level of residential uses in that area. Next slide, please. So as part of that, there are two additions. In addition to the changing of the use table within that chapter, we've also made changes to the development standards, specifically to add the language here for mixed use development. And the intent is really to ensure that what comes out of this process is mixed use development that has both residential and non-residential components that need a couple of criteria. First of all, we've talked about the density requirement, minimum of 40 dwelling units per acre. To give you an idea of what that means, the 30 dwelling units per acre is probably the upper level for our highest level of residential multifamily, and it is the starting level for our high intensity areas in the Brewer District and in the Capitol Corridor.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, Brad. So is this to make it easier, for example, for us to have a development where you can have multifamily, you can have a gym, you can have a 7-Eleven, all in one vicinity?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So the important thing is here, it's not, and if I misstated, it's non-residential use. So any of the non-residential uses that are currently allowed within general commercial, that could be anything from institutional library to a large commercial development like a grocery store, or any of those range of other uses could be part of that kind of mixed use development. But the idea would be in the same site or in the same building. So. The next slide, please. The other component was ensuring that because we wanted to make sure that the general commercial use, general commercial zone is used for commercial uses first and foremost, that when we have a development such as this, that we also have a non-residential component. And we wanted to make sure that a certain percentage of either the building, if it's a shared building, say a four story building, the first floor, 25% would be commercial or some other use besides residential, three, four stories above would be residential. Or if it's on the same site, that 40% of that total site would be used for non-residential uses, and the remainder could be used for residential. Now, more commercial can be provided. It's really sort of capping the percentage of residential as part of this. Next slide, please. So the request on behalf.
Councilmember Gaby has a question.
Brad, the example you gave is a sort of, if I have a tourist store, you're in, and up on my first floor, not the grand first floor, is where you have residential, and below the first floor is where you have a commercial. Is that kind of what you're introducing?
Yeah. So if it's in the same building, we don't necessarily care where in the building it's located. So it could be, say, a rooftop restaurant, or a rooftop gym, or in the bottom office space, or dentist office, or whatever. So however it works within the building, we're just concerned about a quarter of that being, you know, maxed out as commercial or non-residential. So as I mentioned, this went before the general government committee at their January 8th meeting. Their recommendation is that council adopt ordinance number O 2024-008, and we would proceed from there. Any other questions?
Any question?
Yes, one more question. So is this change being mandated from the state, or?
No.
This is just us thinking out of the box and, you know, making it happen?
Yeah, we're sort of warming you up for a whole bunch of stuff later in here, I guess.
Okay, that's outstanding. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Swartho.
Thank you, Mayor. And following up on that, Duff, so I was wondering, is there is an issue about density that we'll be doing density reports as far as where we can put our housing? Are we still working on that, or have we, that, okay?
Yeah. We, as part of the approvals at your last regular meeting, one of those was a service provider agreement, the TRPC for land use. They're currently working on that. We're hoping to have something back by the end of this month, and that will inform the land use element and the housing element that you'll probably be seeing come March. At least the GGC will see in March, and we'll start discussions on that.
So potentially, any residential or any housing that could be built, we can add that with any of the potential commercial projects that we're looking at, they can add that.
As in, within the general government, a general commercial zone district, yes.
Councilmember Gaby.
So giving the example that I gave you, if I have a medical facility, a clinic that has a attracted a bunch of traffic and also have medical waste, can I do that within that example that I gave you, the first example?
If it is a non-residential use that is currently allowed within the general commercial, yes.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Any other question? All right, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make the motion because this is the last thing I worked on as a planning commissioner. So I would like to recommend that we adopt ordinance number 02024-008, amending chapter 18.22 of the Tumwater Municipal Code as recommended by the general government committee at their January 8, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Mon Holtz and seconded by Councilmember Dahl Ha. Any further discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right, next item is committee reports. And the first one is public health and safety. Councilmember Gaby.
Thank you, Mayor. So our meeting was easy and quick. We moved to interlocal agreement and then the 265 lava management construction that was passed in our transit calendar today. And then for the additional items, Councilmember Valeri Dohoe clarified to the chief, this sort of, so this relates to the body one camera, clarified to the chief what specifically would come back to public health and safety meeting for us to discuss regarding that issue. So that's my report.
Great, thank you. General Government Committee, Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on January 8, and there were two items on our agenda. We continued our journey on the 2025 COP plan, discussing the climate element. And then we also discussed the ordinance that we just passed. So thank you all for your support on that. I think that's a really important piece of legislation that will not be a silver bullet by any means, but is another important step towards density and making sure we can reach our housing targets for the future. We also changed some of the dates we're going to be meeting to accommodate one council member's schedule on that committee. He will not be named, but we'll be meeting. He will not be named, but we'll be meeting the Tuesday preceding our general meetings for the next couple of meetings in the form of a special meeting. So if you look for us on the Wednesday, make sure you check the calendar first.
Great, thank you. Next is Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. A number of the items that were part of the alphabet soup of our consent calendar were handled at a recent Public Works meeting. And on Thursday, January 23rd, we thought it was canceled, but apparently we are having a meeting, so I guess we're shaking our heads up and down, yes. And on our agenda, we'll be discussing the grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for the Beehive Industrial Area Stormwater retrofit design project and also Resolution Number R 2025-002, the 2025 fee resolution. And we'll be meeting again this Thursday at 8:00 a.m.
Great, thank you. And then the Budget and Finance Committee will meet this Friday at noon, and so that will be our first meeting this year. Next is the Mayor's City Administrator Report, and we'll start with City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Just a couple of things real quick. Legislative session has started, as many of our councilmembers know from very personal experience, but that also means that we're getting a lot of information coming out of Association of Washington Cities. There are a couple of events. I believe Brittany has forwarded those to you and asked if you're interested in going, that she can register you for those. There is a presentation on resident-owned, I'm sorry, the name here, the resident-owned community model for mobile home parks. That's on February 5th. At noon, it's a virtual presentation, and actually Mayor Sullivan will be presenting about Tumwater's manufactured home park zoning district as one example of a way in which these mobile home parks can be a solution for affordable housing needs in some of our communities. Also, City Action Day is on February 19th and 20th in Lacey, that's AWC. So let Brittany know if you're interested in attending any of those events. And then just as a reminder, there is a weekly legislative bulletin that AWC sends out. It's weekly during session, they do it monthly during the interim periods. If you need help getting signed up for that, or if you're interested in being signed up for that, please let us know, and we can help get that started. And then the last thing I have for you specifically is, last year, Tumwater's Arts Program was able to work collaboratively with the Tumwater School District to bring a Tumwater Youth Showcase to the Washington Performing Center, Performing Arts Center. They have, we have done that again, although it was so popular last year, not enough parents were able to actually attend. So we have split it into two evenings. So on February 12th, from 6:30 to 8:00, there's Jazz Night. So that'll be the Tumwater Middle School, Black Hills High School, and Tumwater High School Jazz Bands. And then on February 25th is Orchestra Night. So that will be Tumwater Middle School, Black Hills High School orchestras, and again from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. So super excited to announce this program that really showcases the talent that we have here in our youth in Tumwater, and keep your eye out for tickets going on sale for that. And then I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'm looking forward to it.
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Minister of Parks, I did have a question. I was going to use it in my update, but this seems to be a natural transition. When we receive emails regarding like network providers or like, say, services that we're not providing, say, for example, we received an email from the city, which we did, and council was included, and it was a network challenge. In the past, there was a government liaison person, and I had looked, and we had met with them like in 2018, and obviously that person is not there anymore. Do you have a list of like the government liaisons? Like we get emails from PSC, our person Christine, do we have one for like provider for cable or DISH or other networks when we get questions like that from constituents?
I am not aware of that list. I can certainly look into it, absolutely.
I think that would be helpful because I think we're getting more and more challenges that is not, we don't have the answer, but we should be able to direct them to some liaison.
Yes.
Awesome.
I can definitely check into that. I don't know that we will, some of the challenges that were expressed in that email are not unique to that person, and we actually experienced some of those same challenges connecting with that organization, but definitely I will look into that and see if we have a list and make sure that when and if we do, I can add that to that reply.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, quickly, Councilmember Dohoe has a question. Shoot the city, because what was expressed in that email is what happened to me, but I didn't make a fuss of it. So if you have an email and you say it's not unique, that means that this is prevalent. What does a city, what kind of city do?
So we have absolutely no control over the business practices of individual service providers. We have franchise agreements, and those are based with utility providers who want to use our right-of-way to deliver their services. But that, the extent of that, and I'm sure Karen will jump in here, the extent of that really is authorizing the conditions within which we are allowing that utility to use our right-of-way. We have no control, say, or influence over how much they charge, how much their increases are, whether or not they're charging. There was one example in that email that it's like, why is Tumwater charged more than people who live in Olympia? I can't answer that question and can't influence that decision either, so.
One thing to add to, Council, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Go along with Councilmember Agabi, is that's what happened in 2018 with certain rates, and we, I was, we are all, if we had the capacity to meet with that government liaison, and we learned about a senior program at discounts, which was not public. And so if we didn't have that conversation, so I think there is an opportunity to build that rapport of what's expected in Tumwater. For me, it's getting to yes, and what does that look like? And if our constituents are having a challenge, how do we get to yes? So I think it would be good to have that relationship, not trying to control anything, but also setting the tone in Tumwater is how we treat our residents. And so if there is challenges with pricing, learning about these other programs that are not widespread or known, I think we should have those discussions.
Certainly.
Thank you. All right.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
All right, so I would just say that the month of January has been super busy so far. So I know that a couple of members here attended the Martin Luther King event at South Puget Sound Community College. I had a conflict that night, but I did attend and was one of the speakers at the Martin Luther King event at New Life Baptist Church in Lacey and was one of the speakers. That was, they had an amazing turnout, and I am now on the EDC board, so tomorrow I have EDC. In addition to that, I also sit on a couple of committees for Association of Washington Cities, so I'm trying to figure out how to do Zoom meetings and then jump into another meeting. And so I have that worked out, so tomorrow is back-to-back meetings. The AWC Mayor's Exchange is this Friday, and I will be doing the welcoming because that is, it will be in Olympia. And I, in addition to some ribbon cuttings and a couple of other events, I will also be attending the Olympia Area Chinese New Year, which is Saturday for February 1st. So that's just a few of the items before our next council meeting. So with that, if there's no questions, I will go to council reports, and so Councilmember Kathy, do you mind going first?
No, I would never talk back to the mayor, no. I just wanted to say when Councilmember Althouser gave his report and said that somebody wanted some special treatment for our meeting times, or it was our meeting days, because if it had been our meeting times, that person would have been me. So I appreciate that he didn't mention anything about, about when we meet and so forth. And the other one, member and I are happy to accommodate any changes that need to be made. That's not my major report, but I just wanted to mention it. Now, I attended the, excuse me, I attended the, let's see, what meeting did I have first? Well, first with General Government, and then I had my, my Orca meeting, Olympia Area Clean Air Agency, and we had to have quite a discussion about hot smoke during this time of year. Many, many people are still using wood stoves, and so we get complaints in some of the neighborhoods about that if it happens to be a neighborhood that doesn't have a lot of wood stoves. And then there are other neighborhoods that many people have the wood stoves, and it's just amazing how much wood stoves impact the air and how much it lingers, and people have issues with that. So we did a lot of talking about that and location and not anything much to do with Tumwater. A lot of people did the exchange, where they exchanged their wood stoves. So that was one meeting, and my other meeting was canceled since it fell on the 1st of January. So that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Kathy. Let me go with Councilmember Von Holtz.
I was trying not to make eye contact. On January 15th, I attended Inner City Transit, and covered in that meeting was that there's a new fixed route network coming in September, and this will be a big improvement to the existing system. Buses will be coming every 15 minutes, there will be some expansion in Tumwater, although not as far out as we would hope past Black Hills, because there's just no way for them to turn buses around, but some big improvements coming to folks who utilize inner-city transit, which is exciting. Friday, I also, I attended with Councilmember Jefferson and Councilmember Swarthout the MLK event at South Puget Sound Community College, and that was really great to hear Dr. Jackson speak and be in community. And Saturday, I attended the NAACP of Thurston County meeting, and Councilmember Jefferson was there because I follow her, and that just felt really good to be in community in Tumwater at our cultural center. And then Monday, of course, we were attending that Lacey MLK event, which was chicken soup for my soul. It felt really good to be in community yesterday especially.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Today, I attended the Olympia and Beyond meeting, the highlight of the meeting. The search for our new CEO is on. We announced a position on several job sites last month and received three candidates. We want a much wider pool of candidates, so we voted to use a recruitment company to help us with the search, to find that candidate. Job experience and knowing how to work with a diverse group of cities and personalities is key, so more to follow on that. Last week, Wednesday, 8th January, I attended the State of the Community Forum. This is an event hosted by the Thurston County Chamber every year. This was in place for our esteemed mayor. Since our quarterback was out, the backup quarterback, myself, stepped in at a moment's notice to replace her. The backup quarterback performed quite well. All relevant information was given, questions were answered. The standard was to update business owners on the state of the city, so I gave a 10-minute speech, discussed new opportunities, economic development, and the challenges facing our city as we grow. Last Friday, I attended T-Hopes meeting hosted by FESS, and I'm excited to announce that we have an official partnership with FESS. This is what we have been trying to do to just create partnerships, to get our faces out there. So we're going to partner with them and on parenting programs to educate families on our mission. I also volunteered last week at the New Year's Eve themed event at Bush Middle School for grades two to five. I was impressed that there was something for every child, the introverts, the extroverts, the ones who wanted, you know, physical activity. The bouncy house was a hit, it was very popular, and dodgeball was, was also popular. The rules were quickly ignored by the kids. They did their own thing with the balls, balls everywhere, but they safely played. I attended several community events this weekend. One was a scholarship dinner for our underprivileged kids hosted by SPSCC and the Thurston Group of Washington. This organization has given out more than $6 million in scholarship. I was honored to receive an award for the mayor, where Tumwater, along with the city of Lacey and Olympia, were officially recognized for the work we are doing as it relates to standing up for equality for all people. I'd like to read the plaque for the record, Mayor. The city of Tumwater, in recognition of your proclamation, should be resolution honoring and encouraging residents of culturally diverse backgrounds, including people of color, LGBTQIA+ plus individuals, and other underrepresented groups. To embrace hope for a brighter future, your commitment to fostering inclusion, equity, and belonging creates pathways for improvement in education, employment, and opportunities that have historically been out of reach. These efforts inspire progress and transform lives, presented by gratitude by the Thurston Group of Washington State, January 17, 2025. And just a few more words, as you see, LGBTQIA+ was highlighted. I would like the community to know that we take this seriously. Our marginalized people should feel safe in Tumwater. I feel confident that our leadership are going to support everyone in this community. There might be chaos at the top, but we're going to be fine right here in Tumwater. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you again for attending the chamber meeting. I was able to make it to the Thurston, to the Tumwater Chamber meeting, so you didn't have to do double duty, so thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
Oof, that's true. Kind of difficult to follow that. So on January 8th, I attended the Thurston Community Transportation Board meeting. Our meeting was short. We mostly did election stuff. Mayor Pitt commit was, we appointed to do full body, and then we discussed schedule, and then we changed our, normally we would make from 7:00 in the morning to 9:00, but we changed that to 8:00 in the morning, so that would give me time to catch some sleep. And then we had, so our current chair and the rider would like to continue as the chair, and nobody thus far has volunteered to be his vice chair, so we are looking for one. And we did the original transportation plan, the equity plan, and staff presented changes to the 2050 update of the original transportation plan in alignment with equity consideration. Proposed changes include using more inclusive language, imagery, added safety as a recommendation, reshaping, and reordering some policies and inspiring upon environmental justice. So this kind of follows with what Councilmember Jefferson had just touched on, so that is my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Two highlights. The Thurston County Opidate Response Task Force Plan was adopted by the Thurston County Board of Health last week. That means all the strategies for all the subgroups can move forward, and the subgroups can start working on planning for the year, so more updates on that. And regarding TCOM, one of my favorite times is the types of calls. I think Councilmember Swarthout was the only one who's actually tracking the numbers with me. The calls are going down, so our last meeting the other week... The calls are going down. So our last meeting, um, the other week, we talked about, why is that? Example, the latest numbers we have for November 2023, the calls were 29,000. 2024, 28,000. So we heard from staff that the calls are going down, but the time on calls and the complexity is going up. So we're gonna dive into that a little bit more, the coding and the support, and then what the jurisdictions are seeing, and what that means for Tumwater. Um, so more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Altheuser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The Regional Housing Council has not met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow. So we will have a full report about that meeting at our next council meeting. And I do wanna thank, uh, Councilmember Kathy for her correction of the record. But I, I would note that I did offer to meet earlier before 7:00 AM, and that that was met with hostility, and it was shut down rather quickly.
It said 4:00 AM.
So, uh, we did discuss times, but they were, uh, we couldn't come to a mutual agreement. But that's, that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Swarthout.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, let's see, uh, the last meeting I had was with the, uh, transport, or Thurston Regional Planning Council on January 10th, and we adopted the operating budget. We also, um, had received a briefing on the emergency detour routes, uh, the current conditions report. And then we got to play a game with the, uh, the new, the 2024 profile update. So you guys are data nerds. There's so much information on the profile, and it's unfortunate that, uh, Mark Daly didn't lead us through that little, uh, through the game at our work session because it's, um, it's really interesting, and it's just, there's so much data there. So, um, really encourage people to, to check out that site. And I do have a climate mitigation, or, uh, Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative will be meeting on Monday from 4:00 to 6:00. And Councilmember Kathy, we miss your face.
Great, thank you.
What'd you say? I missed that.
I said, Councilmember, we miss your face.
Oh, thank you. You just, you just need somebody sitting next to you there. Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm working on it.
Great, thank you. All right, that concludes our business this evening. We are adjourned, everyone. Have a great evening.